I'd like to call the April 2016 meeting of the Board of Education to order. I'd just like the audience to know that, or notice that we all have on blue ribbons, and that's in honor of Child Abuse Prevention Month. And just to let you know, seven ways that you can prevent child abuse. Wear a blue ribbon to spread the message that every child matters. Be there for kids, listen, and emphasize. Know the signs of child abuse. Treat all children and parents with respect. Look for the good in everyone. Set a positive example. Never use put downs. Reach out to a parent who seems overwhelmed, and you can make a difference. Take action right away if a child has been abused. I'm gonna turn it over to Darnell right now.
Just for those that don't know, I've worked in child abuse prevention for the last, I said thirteen earlier, but it's actually, I realized, fourteen years with the city of Chesapeake. I run a program up there called Court Appointed Special Advocates Program here in North Carolina. It's called the Guardian of Lightum Program. But I've been the director up there for a long time, and I was really proud to see our staff come in to share blue ribbons with us today. You know, that's something they did on their own initiative, and I love it. I love when we can spread that message and make sure that our kids in our homes are safe and taken care of. Just know that kids of all walks of life, whether they're living on low-income standards all the way up to million-dollar homes, are abused and neglected. It doesn't matter where they come from, or if they're smart, if they're struggling educationally, it's all of our children are at risk. So if you find that you've come across a child in your life that you suspect abuse could be taking place, the way the law is written is you call, even if you just expect, you know, suspected. You don't have to prove it, you don't have to come up with that, that's social services job. So please, if you find that you feel like a child could be at risk or is showing signs of that, please call, because it's not just, you know, those kids that we sometimes think are going to be in those situations. Statistics show that about one in every four to one every five boy, one in every, one in every four girls, one in every five boys are actually suffering from abuse neglect on, on a regular basis. So it could be anybody. So just keep that in mind, and for those that have children in their homes, we ask that you hug them extra tight tonight, get them lots of love, and remind them of, you know, how much you care about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next invocation. Seth Ridge.
Yes, a couple things. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family of Ty Chalk, son of Danny and Nikki Chalk. Ty passed away, and please continue to keep the family of Ty in your thoughts and prayers. And you'll notice we're missing Dwan tonight. Her husband, Mike, underwent surgery, and she's there at the hospital with him. And also, please keep Dwan and Mike Kraft in your prayers. A note of encouragement. Therefore, encourage one another and build each other up, just as in fact you are doing. 1 Thessalonians 5:11. Want to do something for your family that they will never forget? Write them a meaningful note. It's not to be instructional. Don't correct. Don't teach. We do that enough. In fact, there is probably nothing you could say that they haven't heard before. Many times, this is something very different. It's a note of encouragement. From your heart to theirs. Why a written note when we're in the age of texting, emailing? Do something different. Write a note from the heart. In this day of instant messages and email, written notes mean more than ever. Your family will read it and absorb it without interruptions. They'll receive it without pressure, without having to think about how to respond. Include three things in the note. First, let them know that you love them for who they are. Second, describe and praise them for their unique talents, gifts, and abilities. Third, tell them what you want them to remember about your relationship. Speak of blessing into the life of your family. Don't worry about having the perfect words, just share your heart. They will remember that, and they will treasure it forever. Thank you.
Next, Principal Angela Lasher from Griggs Elementary will introduce a student who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. This is Michael Frederick. He is a fifth-grade student at Griggs, and he is the son of Ken and Michelle Frederick.
Would you all please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Michael, thank you very much. Dr. WT Griggs Elementary is our school's spotlight this month, and I'll turn it back over to Principal Lasher.
Good evening again, Chairman Dobney, Board members, and Superintendent Stefanik. One of the initiatives we've been working on the past three years is the Leader in Me, and incorporating those seven habits into our everyday practices at Griggs. And so the big push we did this year was getting our students involved in that, and having our students become leaders. And so I don't want to talk too much, because they're gonna tell you what they're doing. But part of that was, in January, we created a student council of our fourth and fifth grade students, and that is led up by our Assistant Principal Carrie Chapel. So I'm gonna turn this over to her and our students to tell you more about that.
Again, thank you for having us. One of the first questions I asked this group of students when we first met was, "What do you think your job is?" And they immediately said, "We're to be the voice of the students." So I'm gonna turn it over to them and the little presentation that they've turned over today, but I'm very proud of them and the work that we've done so far this semester.
Hi, I'm Olivia Burns. This semester, our school developed a student council. There are eight students who serve on our student council. They are chosen by our homeroom teachers based on their ability to communicate with other classmates and being able to come up with ideas. We meet every Tuesday morning, and we run our meeting formats and agendas through Google Docs. We communicate with Ms. Chapel through email and the rest of the week as needed.
Hello, my name is Jasmine, and, my name is Jasmine Robbins, and our first task was to organize our third-nine-weeks PBIS Points Day. This is a day where students get to participate in fun activities if they scored enough points through the nine weeks based on attendance, work completion, and behavior. At first, we surveyed the students to find out the types of activities they want to, they wanted to have. Then we proceeded to survey students to make decisions about what we would offer to, for each category. Here are some of the pictures from our events. We had bounce slide, cooking, science, art, movie, and computers.
Hello, my name is Kayden Lowe. Our next big event that we are organizing is our school talent show. That will be held on April 22nd. We are creating the audition forms as well as organizing the performance order of the show and teams to run the show. It is our hope that our council can continue to be the voice of the students. We hope to organize a recycling committee for next year, a greeter program to help our students at the front door, as well as other things that, that can be, that, that can be student-run and led.
Thank you for letting us share our student council experience with you. We hope you come and visit us soon.
Thank you. Okay, if you would all just once again say your name into the microphone?
I'm Olivia Burns.
I'm Kayden Lowe.
I'm Jasmine Robbins.
I'm Michael Frederick.
Once again, thank you very much. And the students are free to leave, because they may possibly have homework tonight, so if you'd like to leave, you're more than welcome. Next item on the agenda is the Work Session Review. At the work session that we had at four o'clock today, we received our Child Abuse Prevention Month ribbons. We heard about the 2016-17 capital outlay budget review, received budget amendments, heard from the Agriculture Department, from Don Monroe, who's a career and technical education director, Missy Swain, and Daniel Meads, who work with the CCHS Agriculture Education, because if many of you've noticed, we cut down all the bushes in front of the Currituck County High School, and we've asked the Ag Department to come up with a plan for replanting trees and shrubs there. We also heard from Renee Doughty, the principal of Currituck County High School, about senior privileges and open lunch. We received a report from our transportation manager, Amanda Sweet, about how many stop-arm violations are being prosecuted, and we do have cameras in the stoparms in the buses, and I think it was three out of seven of people that have passed the stoparms have been prosecuted, and hopefully that will go up. And then we received a lot of information on many policies, second reading of many policies. And that was about it. And next, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Next item, School Board member reports. Mary Kate, Sidney, and Jacob.
All right, good evening. And first of all, I want to make an announcement, and this is from the school board. So as Katie, who's not with us tonight, and I will be graduating in June, there will be a vacancy on the school board. So now, there is an opening, and applications can be picked up in the front office at CCHS, and is that the same at JPNAP?
Okay, and also in the JPNAP front office to fill the junior school board position for the upcoming year. So that will be going on through April 30th, and turn those into the front office at JPNAP or CCHS, and they will forward them to Missy Vett. So with that, I also have the announcements for Shawboro Elementary. April is a busy month for the Mustangs. Parent-teacher conferences began today. Tomorrow, JB Rattles will help kick off the One District, One Book campaign for 2016. The book to be read across the community is Hank Zipser: The Day of the Iguana. So thank you to Mrs. Lasher, the NC State Employees Credit Union, and Town Bank of Currituck for helping make this event happen for our kids. Thursday, April 14th, our nine-weeks award assembly will take place for all grades beginning at 8:15 a.m. The district-wide Battle of the Books will take place on April 15th. On April 18th, the Coast Guard will be, will visit and present to our second and fifth grade classes lessons on boating safety. On April 20th, our 111-member third-grade class will head to the Norfolk Zoo, and that same class will head, will head to the countywide Ag Day on Friday, the 22nd. And I know my fellow FFA officers and FFA members, we're all really excited about that. Our second-grade class will be taking a field trip to the festival park on Roanoke Island on April 25th. We are looking forward to an outstanding fifth-grade musical on April 28th at 6:30 that will be preceded by the PTO meeting at 6:00 p.m. Our Student of the Month luncheon will be held on April 29th. This will be a busy, busy month for the Mustangs. I'm also going to be announcing for Currituck Middle School, Currituck County Middle Schools' events for the month include parent-teacher conferences tonight, or they were from 3:00 to 6:00 at the middle school. Report cards will be sent home this Friday with students, or report cards may be picked up today. Noah Justice was selected to perform for the All-State Orchestra. He received the highest score in his section in the state. He was the first chair placement for the All-State Orchestra. Congratulations to Noah. The spring sports have begun, and we have over 77th and 8th graders participating this spring. Our boys' track team is undefeated, so far winning against Moayak, First Flight, and Pasquetank this season. Our spring band concert is May 12th at 6:30, and the Spring Chorus Musical for CCMS is May 19th and 20th at 6:00. And I'm also announcing for Currituck County High School, all freshmen will be participating in the annual Career Forum on Friday, April 8th. This opportunity exposes students to local businesses and career opportunities. Spring sports are underway, and we are just waiting on the spring weather to cooperate to make spectating more enjoyable. The annual Military Ball for ROTC cadets will be this Saturday at the Coast Guard Base. Our cadets are excited about the opportunity to dress in uniform and represent CCHS at its best. On Saturday, April 23rd, our Band Booster Club will be sponsoring a fundraiser for March for Music at CCHS. We hope you will, we hope you will join us. Digging into Ag Day will be April 22nd at the Currituck Rural Center. Our Ag students are busy preparing their booths and activities for all the third graders. The SAT will be administered here at CCHS on May 7th. The registration deadline is tomorrow. April 8th, and the late registration deadline is April 22nd. Prom tickets will go on sale in May and will be held at the Outer Banks Hilton from 6:30 to 10:30 on May 21st, so keep up to date for that information. Early renewal for Chromebooks runs through May 25th for $20, and after the 25th, the prices will return to $25. Forms are available in the high school library. There will be a cheerleading interest meeting on April 12th at 6:00 p.m. in the cafeteria. All students interested in cheering next year should make plans to attend with their parent. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Sidney.
Good evening. I'm Sidney Christian, and I'm going to be announcing Central Elementary School, Knott's Island Elementary School, Jarvisburg Elementary, and Griggs Elementary. So for Griggs Elementary, they say, "Welcome back from spring break. Griggs kicked off April with a ready, set, jump assembly sponsored by our PTO this past Monday. One book, one district begins Monday, April 11th with the kickoff assembly by JB's Rattles." We are excited to join in the fun of reading Hank Zipser: Day of the Iguana. They want to personally thank Ms. Robinson, Principal Fellow's intern, for all the hard work she has done to make OBD happen. Our third-nine-weeks recognition assembly will be held on April 14th with K-2 beginning at 12:30 and 3 through 5 at 1:30. For Jarvisburg Elementary, they will be participating in the One District, One Book program beginning April 11th. Our kickoff assembly will be April 11th at 2:00 in the gym with JB's Rattles and friends. On Monday, our students had the opportunity to see Ready, Set, Jump, an exciting assembly presented by our JAGS organization. Our next student recognition assembly will be April 8th. Students in grades K through 2 will be recognized at 1:45, and grades 3 through 5 will be recognized at 2:30 in the gym. For Knott's Island Elementary, they will be participating in the One District, One Book program on April 11th. Our kickoff assembly will be April 8th at 10:00 in the gym with JB's Rattles and friends. The nine-weeks awards assembly will be April 13th at 2:00 in the gym. They will be taking the entire school on a field trip to the Virginia Zoo on April 11th. On April 27th, from 6:00 to 7:30, we will be having a STEM night in the library with the Stellar Stargazer event. We will be having a guest from the Back Bay Amateur Astronomer Society to share information about stars and outer space. Other space-related activities are planned for the evening as well. And last but not least, Central Elementary. Many exciting events are on the horizon at Central Elementary this month. First, parent-teacher conferences started today as the last bus pulled away from the school, and tomorrow, report cards will be distributed. Monday, April 11th kicks off One District, One Book. A big thanks and shout-out to Ms. Lasher at Griggs Elementary for organizing and planning this year's events. Thursday, April 14th is an Individual and Group Pictures Day at CES. Smile. On Friday, April 15th, the K-2 classes will be participating in Field Day. The following Monday, April 18th, the 3 through 5 classes will be participating in their Field Day. Rain dates will be announced if either event is canceled due to the weather. They also want to wish their Battle of the Books team the best of luck when they head to the county tournament on April 15th. On April 22nd, our third-grade classes will be participating in the county's Ag Day. Also, on April 22nd, our second and fifth-grade classes will be visited by a COSE, which is a program provided by the Elizabeth City Coast Guard Base about water safety. For more information about these and other events happening at Central, please visit our webpage and calendar. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Jacob.
I'll be covering Moayak Elementary, Moayak Middle School, and JPNAP Early College. So for Moayak Elementary, now that the spring break has come and gone, the Panthers are gearing up for their final countdown of the 2015-16 school year. They'll begin reading their One District, One Book selection, Hank Zipser: The Day of the Iguana, on April 11th, and they're looking forward to the kickoff assembly with JB Rattles. Their third-quarter awards program will be held on April 14th, and their fourth graders will be doing their third annual business expo on April 20th. Third graders will be participating in Digging into Agriculture on April 22nd, and the 11th Annual Jog-a-Thon in support of Relay for Life will be held on April 29th. Time sure flies when you're having fun. For Moayak Middle, as reported last month, there were several Moayak Middle School students who competed at the state conference competition in Greensboro. Congratulations to the over 12 students who placed in the various categories, as well as to all the chapter awards they've received, such as the Gold Seal Chapter of Excellence. There are also some middle-level achievements, such as the 25 students who achieved the entrepreneur level in the FBLA organization. They also have a group of students traveling to ECSU today to compete in an algebra competition. On the 15th and 16th of the month, some band students will be participating in the Albemarle Band Clinic. Baseball, softball, and track are off to good starts this season and will have events throughout the month. On the 13th, Mr. Roller and some of his students will be attending the county commissioners' meeting to discuss their project on Currituck County being a food desert and ways to proactively help change this. And last but most definitely not least, JPNAP Early College. Acceptance letters for the class of 2020 were mailed out this week. The Rachel's Challenge and Friends of Rachel Club year-end wrap-up was held today at JPNAP. Commitment Day for next year's incoming freshman class is April 15th. The JPNAP prom will be held in the media center on Saturday, April 16th, from 8:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Tickets are $55. I just wanted to say to Ms. Bowyer and the prom committee, they've worked their hearts out, and they've done an amazing job setting up the prom, so I just wanted to say thank you for everything you've done. You rock, Ms. Bowyer. The ACT makeup exam will be given at JPNAP on Tuesday, April 19th. The meet and greet for next year's freshman class will be held on Tuesday, April 26th, and the COA Secondary Education Advisory Committee will meet on Wednesday, April 27th. And with that, I'll hand it back to Dr. Dobny.
Okay, thank you. Next, field trip request, and this will be the last month that the board has to approve field trip requests, because we passed the policy, and from now on, Mr. Stefanik, the superintendent, will approve those, and we'll just be notified of field trips from that point on. Mr. Stefanik?
Thank you, Dr. Dobny. I was gonna mention that myself.
Well, now you don't have to.
Yeah, stole some, stole some of my thunder. Two, two field trips for this month. First one, we have Currituck High School Science Olympiad participants heading to Raleigh on April 22nd and 23rd, and we have 16 students going to that competition. Right now, we're still finalizing chaperones, and so with that one, we'll make that approval contingent upon completing the chaperone list.
Thank you.
All right, and the second one is Currituck High School Hunter Safety Tournament in LRB, North Carolina, on April 29th and May 1st, and we have nine students going to that competition.
Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on any of the field trips? Okay, since there's no discussion, I have a motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next, JPNAP Early College Innovation and Excellence Award, presented by North Carolina New Schools, and at this time, I will ask Mr. Bassnight, principal of JPNAP Early College, to come forward, and I think I also noticed that Dr. Dieter Meyer, president of COA, is here.
She is. Dr. Dobny, board members, Mr. Stefanik, this is an incredible night for JPNAP. We have been recognized for, I guess the difference in this award is this, a lot of times, you get recognized for doing something well. This award isn't for doing something well, it's for doing a lot of things well. It's not for one test score, it's not for one group, it's across the board. And it doesn't happen when singular groups do things. It only happens when singular groups get together and everybody works together to make this possible, and that's what this award really means to me. So before I go much further, I want to introduce some pretty significant people and have them come up. First of all, my right hand, Ms. Fallon. And we've got several of our staff members, Ms. Bowyer, Ms. Schultz, Dr. Corbo, Ms. Samborsky, and Mr. Charles Martin, if y'all will come up, please. As you, as you recognized in the back of the room, Dr. Dieter Meyer is here, she's the president of COA, along with Dean Raden, if y'all will come up, please. The only thing that's missing from a really good photo here would be 269 students. But what happened was this group of people and several others got together and started three years ago, setting some pretty lofty goals. We applied originally for the Innovation and Excellence Award by turning in all of our information, and they sent back some recommendations, and I think we've all been there. So we took the recommendations, and we added them to the list of things we wanted to do, and resubmitted our information. You know, it's sort of like good teaching. You go in a classroom, you teach the lesson, you check the kids, see what they learned and what they got from it, and then you review what you did, you revise it, and you go back at it again. And that happens day in and day out at JPNAP. And all of these people contribute in one way or another to that, and it's just quite an honor to be standing here. So the last two people I want to introduce are from North Carolina New Schools tonight. First of all, Ms. Vicki Wells. Vicki is our instructional coach. She comes down about once a month to do professional development with us. After we dismiss on Friday afternoons, we've got a session tomorrow. And she also goes into classrooms and works with teachers on their instruction and improving their instruction. And then finally, representing North Carolina New Schools Breakthrough Learning, is Ms. Stacy Costello, and I'll turn the mic over to her.
So please stay. As Principal Bassnight said, this award is for all of you, and so we'd like you all to be up here for this. Superintendent Stefanik, Chairman Dobny, members of the board, I am pleased to be here this evening to formally recognize the impressive work happening at JPNAP Early College High School. JPNAP Early College was recently named a North Carolina New Schools Breakthrough Learning School of Innovation and Excellence for its undeniable commitment to academic excellence and college and career readiness for all students. JPNAP Early College is one of just 16 schools across our statewide network of over 181 schools to receive this recognition. JPNAP Early College stood out for its work to achieve the following results. Exceeding expected growth in the 2014-15 academic year. An ACT composite score of 21.7 in overall proficiency rate, exceeding 81% in the 2014-15 academic year. Continuous implementation of education innovation, including an intentional approach to preparing students for succeeding in college classes while still in high school. This is the result of consistent efforts to support student learning and college readiness over the past three years. Moving forward, JPNAP will serve as a demonstration site for educators, policymakers, and community leaders from North Carolina and other states. This achievement is a testament to the vision and leadership of Superintendent Stefanik, the district staff in its support of the school, the outstanding leadership of Principal Bassnight, and the consistent hard work of the staff and students at this school. I am proud, as a representative of North Carolina New Schools, to formally present JPNAP Early College High School with the School of Innovation and Excellence Award for their continued efforts to support all students in graduating ready for college careers in life.[1793.25]
We're going to turn around, and Jane's going to take one, too.
All right, get real tight. Very nice.
Vicki hiding?
No, Annette. Come around the front, so we can see you.
At least switch shoulder spots.
Thank you. All right, turn around, so Jane can... Don't step on each other. Thank you, Stacy. Thank you.
On behalf of the board, I'd just like to thank, you know, Principal Bassnight and all the faculty at Napp Early College for the outstanding job they do, and I'd also like to recognize Dr. Diede Meyer and the cooperation that we have with COA, and that helps make our program much better. And I understand the high school this year is going to, you know, partake of that relationship this year to an even greater extent than what we used to. So, thank you, everyone, and congratulations once again. Next, Currituck FFA and North Carolina Tobacco Trust Grant. Don Monroe, Career and Technical Education Director.
Good evening, Mr. Stefanik, school board members. I must say, this is a very impressive group of students right here behind me. I'm honored tonight to recognize our Currituck County High School Agriculture Education Teachers, Ms. Missy Swain and Mr. Daniel Meads. These teachers have gone far and above yet one more time. They have worked together to write a grant and propose it to the North Carolina Trust Fund Commission for Education Program Improvement, and I'm happy to report that they are a recipient of that grant. Here to present the grant, on behalf of the commission, is Mr. Horace Johnson, Northeast Regional Coordinator. Mr. Johnson?
Dr. Dobney and Mr. Stefanik, board members.
Yes?
It's always a pleasure mine to make these kinds of presentations when you can come to a school system and bring something of value to them. But before I do this, I want to just say to you, I have the privilege of working with about 170 high school and middle school agricultural education programs in middle North Carolina, in central North Carolina, and in the eastern part of our state. Number one, I'd like to say, I've had a lot of time with Currituck High because Mary Kate Morgan is our Northeast Region FFA President, and I want to tell you, I am so impressed, as an outsider coming in, I can honestly say to you, Currituck County High School is one of the cleanest, most kept, well-kept schools that I have the privilege to visit, and I commend that local administration and you, as a board and as a superintendent. I also want to say to you, and I'm not here just to offer flattery, because it's definitely not flattering, but Ms. Swain and Mr. Meads are two of the very best agricultural education teachers in this state. And Currituck County High School is one of the premier agricultural education programs in our state. We've got about 40,000 agricultural education students, 310 programs, and they are in the top 10, I will guarantee you that. And I was telling Mr. Monroe a little earlier, every time you go to a program, if they've got really good quality teachers, you have a good quality program. So I commend these teachers. And without too much further ado, let me just say, I'm here also representing the Tobacco Trust Fund Grant and the commission. In the year 2000, the General Assembly established the Tobacco Trust Fund Commission, an 18-member board, and they decided, in their wisdom, to give $180,000 to North Carolina FFA this year to help agricultural education programs. And Currituck County High School was one of 35 programs to receive a grant, and they're going to use their grant to construct a chicken coop. And I'm sure it's going to be a blessing to them and to their program, and we have a check here for $3,000. We'd like to present it to Currituck County. Ms. Swain, you need to get over here and picture as well.
You're challenging my... Mr. Monroe, are you not in... I don't see you.
He's over here by the door.
Come on.
Yeah, I know. There you go.
Before you sit down, I've got a couple of things to say. First of all, how many are on the Hunter Safety Team? Are any of you on the... Okay, congratulations, because I understand you did very well this year. Okay, how many of them helped you set out the trees and had to stand where the trees were going to go?
Two. You two are busy.
And third, I'm glad you got this, because I was just telling the board tonight, while we were eating supper, I was getting my car work on at the auto shop, and I thought I'd go out and check out the junior high practice field, and I walked around the greenhouse and got attacked by a crazy rooster. So I'm glad we're going to have a chicken coop.
About the security alarms, too.
Yeah, go ahead, tell them about the security alarm.
Yeah.
Oh, we received a notification from the Sheriff's Department that Currituck Middle School is on a record-setting pace for false alarms. And when they talked to Dr. King and the head custodian at the middle school, they said several of those alarms are triggered by the chickens. And they get the motion sensors, and so the alarms go off, and they think somebody's trying to break into the school, and it's just the chickens.
So make sure there's a top on that.
Yeah, if you put a tarp over, I don't know if this is... Yeah, you put a tarp over top of them, don't they think that it's nighttime and they go to sleep or something? So, you know.
There's going to be a nice brooding dog, so he won't have to worry about that.
Nice, nice, nice.
It's just funny that that's what we discussed today, is his rooster attack and the alarm.
And the chickens.
And then he says, "We're building a chicken coop." Perfect timing.
That's great, that's great. Well, Mr. Johnson, we really appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your support of your agricultural education program. What they're doing to develop premier leadership with these young people goes well beyond what they're doing in the classroom, even though what they do in the classroom is extremely important, but that leadership component that these young people are getting will far outweigh anything that they get in that instructional hour. So thank you so much for your support. We do appreciate it.
Well, could we have each one of the teachers and students come up to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Nobody wants to get rid of the check.
I am Missy Swain, and I am one of the agriculture education teachers at the high school.
I'm Wade Fallon. I'm an FFA officer.
No, I don't think so. Is there a green light on?
I was like, I don't think that's...
I don't know how this thing works.
I'm Wade Fallon, and I'm an FFA officer.
Hi, I'm Bailey Davila, and I'm also an FFA Chapter Officer.
I'm Blaney Phillips, and I'm an FFA Officer, and sorry about the chicken, that's mine. I took good care of him, but I don't know what happened to him.
I'm Mary Kate Morgan, and I'm also a Chapter FFA Officer.
I'm Taylor Jenkins, and I'm also an FFA Officer.
I'm Allison Short, and I'm also an FFA Officer.
I'm Jane Fallon, and I'm an FFA Officer.
I'm Lolly Tomlinson, and I'm an FFA member.
I'm Victoria Kuhn, and I'm an FFA Officer.
I'm Jessica Martin, and I'm student teaching with Ms. Swain this semester.
I'm Allison Hicks, and I'm an FFA member.
I'm Adam Zaleed, and I'm an FFA member.
I'm Daniel Meads, I'm the other ag teacher.
Thank you all, we appreciate it, and hopefully you can write another grant, and we can have Mr. Johnson back someday. Oh, and I would just like to mention one other thing. I was telling somebody, 15 years ago, if I would have walked into an ag class, I probably wouldn't have seen a female. And now, we have, what'd you say, Missy, just about 50%?
I would say we're probably 50/50.
Which is amazing, absolutely amazing. Congratulations on the good work. Thank you all once again.
I'll say, my best friend in high school was the FFA President when she was here 20 years ago. And she's a girl.
My mistake.
I'm just picking on you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Next item, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and second. All in favor? Next item, public comment session, and we have one person signed up, Cameron Lowe. And that was your daughter that was here before, right?
That was my daughter, and I figured, you know, while we're here, I might as well talk to you guys, right? So I am Cameron Lowe, the County Extension Director here in Currituck, and I just wanted to bring you a real brief update about some extension programs that are affecting our schools right now. First thing, speaking of chickens, and I was FFA President 22 years ago, so, one of two girls in my ag class, but speaking of chickens, the 4H Embryology Project has been set up this week and next week in three of our elementary schools. Shawboro, Knott's Island was set up yesterday, and Moyac will be set up next week, and that's teaching the life cycle to second-grade students through hands-on hatching of those eggs, so maybe we'll have some we can pass on to the FFA group.
As long as they're in the chicken coop.
As long as they stay contained, yep, absolutely.
Just don't let my daughter bring one home, because she's in second on Knott's Island, and she'll do it.
Well, they got started yesterday, so it's going to be an exciting time. Another thing that we've got coming up that we're looking into right now, NC State University has organized a program called ASPIRE, which is an ACT preparation program, and so some of our 4H staff is going to be trained in this program and is working with Renee Dowdy at Currituck County High School to work to deliver that ACT prep program in your high school, so we're very excited about that. And then finally, and really why I'm standing here before you today, is the 4H Backpacks for Kids program, and I know you guys are all familiar with that program. It is coordinated through Extension's 4H office, and it provides shelf-stable, kid-friendly meals to students who are identified by teachers, nurses, counselors, as being food insecure. In other words, they may not get meals on the weekends when the school isn't providing them. So currently, we're providing meals each and every weekend for about just shy of 125 elementary school students here in Currituck County. Obviously, that program comes with a great expense. We are funding that program through the Currituck Extension Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we're primarily funding that program through grants and independent donations. I wanted to come to you tonight because we've got a big fundraiser coming up that I wanted to make sure you were all aware of, and Mr. Simmons has been helping us with that a bit. We have scheduled for October 22nd, it's way on out there, but you can never start too early, but on October 22nd, we're going to do a barbecue dinner, sell tickets, and do some different things in conjunction with that at the Extension Center solely to benefit the Backpacks for Kids, 4H Backpacks for Kids program. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, and to also say that it costs about $20 per month to feed one child these weekend meals, and so we encourage folks, if you're interested in sponsoring a child, if your business is interested in sponsoring a child or a handful of children, please, 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 get up with us at the Currituck Extension Office. You can speak with Ellen Owens, our 4H agent, or myself, and we'd love to walk you through how to make those tax-deductible donations and keep this program going and sustainable for the long term. So, thank you, guys, for all you do, and I'm really excited about all the support for the FFA program.
Great. Thank you, Cameron. Next information items, next work session will be May 5th, 4 o'clock, at the Professional Learning Center at JP Napp, and the next Board of Education meeting will be May 5th at 6:30 right here at the historic Currituck Courthouse. Next, board member comments, we'll start with Ms. Etheridge.
Yeah, just a couple of things. We touched on Child Abuse Prevention Month, and I wanted to just read this little pamphlet that we received earlier, Child Abuse Prevention Month, 10 Reasons to Stand Up for Children. 10 Children Are the Heart of the Future. 9, Everyone Can Make a Difference in a Child's Life. 8, It's Easier to Build Strong Children Than Repair Broken Adults. 7, All Children Are Special. 6, There's No Excuse for Child Abuse. 5, Children Thrive When Adults Care. 4, Protecting Children Is Everyone's Job. 3, Each Child Deserves to Be Cherished. 2, Children Are Our Most Valuable Resource. And 1, Because They Can't Stand Up for Themselves. To reiterate what Bill said earlier. And then I'm excited about this book, Hank Zipser, and I challenge everyone to read this, and I'm going to take the challenge to read it to my grandchildren, and I'm going to try to sit down with them and read chapter by chapter and see where we go, but I'm excited about that, so I hope everyone else is. Thank you very much.
Mr. Simmons?
It's that time of year again, we've had daylight savings time, and kids are getting home earlier. Riding through a neighborhood the other afternoon, I was really amazed at how many kids were out on the streets playing in the afternoon, riding skateboards, playing basketball, because they have that extra hour of daylight when they get home. Please be careful driving through our neighborhoods. I know I live in a neighborhood that the speed limit's 25, and I think they run 65, so be careful with our kids that are on the streets. Next thing, spring sports, they're rolling. Like I said, if you see the lights on at some of our schools, stop in. If you want to see a good baseball game, you want to see a good soccer game, stop in and watch. Last but not least, I told you guys, it goes so fast. Napp Early College, your prom is coming up here shortly, and the high school prom will be right behind it, and before you know it, graduation will be here, so enjoy your last month or two of school.
Ms. Caddis?
I just want to say, congratulations to Currituck County Middle School. It wasn't mentioned tonight, I hope people know, but our math team there won some awards this past month. They did a great job, came home with some first-place prizes, I believe. Our Currituck County High School cheerleaders came home with a first-place prize. Our chorus from the Currituck Middle School, I believe, won some awards. I'm remembering all this from my head, so. I can say, I also got to go to the Moyac Elementary School Talent Show, and Mr. Cook and Mr. White, our theater director, are going to have their hands full with some of these kids coming up from our elementary school, because they were amazing and wonderful and probably the most entertaining thing I've seen in quite a while. They have no fear, they got up there and put their hearts into it, and it was great, and I've already warned the two of them when I went to the Spring Musical over at the middle school, or high school, but house in the middle school. They're great, and I heard Griggs say tonight that they're going to be having theirs soon, and I'm going to try to make it out to that, because they were just cute as can be. We had all kinds of people. And then, the last thing we had this past month was the Knott's Island PE Night. Kids did great. We had almost every student enrolled in Knott's Island out at the gym that night, almost. We had a few that were shy, but almost all of them, so it was really a great turnout for that. So our kids are just doing great things, so like Mr. Simmons said, if y'all get the chance to get out and see anything that they're doing, go, because it's so entertaining and so great to see the passion these kids have for their schools and what they enjoy, so y'all have a great day.
I guess to piggyback onto that, if you're interested in volunteering for our schools, we always have a need for volunteers, you know, feel free to contact our central office or the schools and, you know, volunteer. Speaking of which, I volunteered at Griggs twice this last month, helping two little Hispanic boys to learn English, and if you've never dealt with someone that can speak very little, if any, English, it's challenging, and they're in the regular classroom for the majority of the day, so not only does our classroom teacher have to deal with them, they have to deal with all the other students in the class, too, so I really, you know, feel for them, so, but they do a great job. Also, April 22nd... Also, April 22nd, I hope we have a good day then, because I guess there's not going to be a makeup day if digging to ag has rained out.
Well, rain or shine, we've got that nice indoor facility there at the Rural Center, so if nothing else, we'll move them all inside, and we've been working really hard, Ms. Swain and my other officers, we've been staying after school, and it's going to be a really great event, we're really excited for it.
Good, I've been there, what, three years, and what the third graders in the county learn is just incredible, just incredible, so hopefully we'll have good weather and they can be outside and inside. Okay, with that, do I have a motion for adjournment?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
You know, I'm one of these people, when somebody does something good, I want to pat them on the back, and Mr. Stefanik has not been our superintendent that long, he's been here and is a board, we sat down tonight, I just want to thank him for the job that he's done so far. Things that we've been trying to get done for five years, he's done in five months. As a board member, I personally want to thank you, and the public, I want to thank you, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Now, do I have a motion for adjournment?
It's a move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.